Discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending. As required under the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, the Princeton Packet, and the Times on March 5, 2019, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230, Recording Devices, requires that we inform those attending this meeting that the proceedings are being recorded on video. This meeting is being video-recorded and also may be livestreamed. Thank you very much. Do we want to call the roll? Beth Baron?
Here.
Gregory Stankiewicz?
Here.
Betsy Calber-Baglio?
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Daniel Dart?
Here.
Jessica Deutsch?
Bill Hare?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Here.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Evelyn Spahn.
Thank you. Yeah, we have several members that are on their way or will be here in about five or 10 minutes. I think we will move forward with our first item. Would you like to say anything about it or introduce it? Or would you like to?
No, go right ahead. Mr. Stankiewicz is Chair of our Facilities Committee.
I'd be happy to. So, the first order of business is a discussion to include the full Board on the progress we've made in working with our construction manager firm and with our architect on thinking through the schedule for the upcoming referendum. And so, we'd like to take some time this evening to bring everyone up to speed but also to highlight some of the issues that the Facilities Committee considered yesterday and that we'd like the full Board to consider. So, with that, I would like to turn it over to Scott Downey, our architect from Spiesel.
Good evening. So, I'm going to take you through just kind of an update of where things are and... Do it the old-fashioned way. So, the various projects are underway. We've started the design and engineering on most components. Things are at various stages, and I'll go into a little more detail on that. We are in the process of conducting input sessions at various levels throughout the district on different things, and that will continue, including we've discussed setting up some public information sessions on a regular basis so we can involve the public in the progress and updating them on the decision-making and the process involved in each of these projects. I am going to take you through a little bit more detail on the schedule as it's been developed for each of the projects and outline the packaging that we're anticipating advancing in terms of bids and projects. And, you know, there's been a lot of back and forth with regard to that planning, but in all cases, it's focused on the three things you see listed here. So, basically maximizing the summer periods we have available when school is not in session, minimizing the impact on school sessions, impact on operations, and also on the managing of costs. So, we do have, in addition to schedule, we do have some logistics planning that's underway, and budget assessments are going to start soon with Epic on board. They've participated in this process and brought a lot to the table in terms of the value and the thoughts and how we can structure things most effectively. And, as I mentioned, we are facilitating actively input sessions, and many of these are focused so at the middle school for... At the high school for guidance improvements, we spend a fair amount of time with the guidance folks and so forth. But we will be doing this more broadly and in general nature, covering all the projects and their status as we move forward. Thank you. It's a free service, right? So, I want to take you through each of the bid packages as we currently see them. The first one that we have listed at the top is the air conditioning. So, as you're aware, air conditioning is being implemented at each of the elementary schools and upgrades at the middle school. Now, the... Our schedule is tight when you consider from where the referendum was passed to this first summer, and the primary issue that drives that schedule is the lead time on equipment. So, right now, we're estimating that the equipment itself will take probably upwards of 12 weeks. Obviously, we're going to try and improve on that, but that's our estimate at this point. And there has been a fair amount of planning and working with the teachers and the principals to look at different equipment options, different room configurations at each of the schools, and that process has carried through to the Board as well. So, our latest thinking on this package is we want to focus on one school, the reason being that we do have limited time. We are concerned about lead times, and we want to make sure we get some air conditioning implemented. And then, I'll talk about how we would plan to implement the balance. So, the school we've focused on primarily because it's small and fairly manageable in terms of the work that has to take place air-conditioning-wise is Riverside. So, the approach that we're proposing to take with Riverside is to actually split the project into a slightly different procurement process. So, rather than documents, put the documents out to bid, contractor gets approval, he buys... He or she buys all the equipment and installs it. We're proposing an approach where the Board would purchase the air-conditioning units themselves directly. The manufacturer we're using as the basis of design is a participant in the Middlesex Co-op, of which the district is a member, so the district has access to do that direct equipment purchase. The main reason we're proposing that is that it allows us to deal with that manufacturing lead time issue fairly proactively. So, we can do that procurement because it's a co-op procurement. We can do it fairly quickly, and we can move that to a point where the Board would order that equipment, and its manufacturing would begin while the regular bid process plays out for a contractor to complete the installation and the other work associated with those installations. So, it's a good way for us to capitalize on the time we have available, get more done because we're able to preorder that equipment and shorten that part of the schedule. So, as the top part of the schedule you see on the screen, the documents and the information we are assembling now that would lead us in this direction, by mid... Or the third week of April, we would hope to have the procurement underway, and that would include the Board approving that procurement and prior to the Board approving it, having a formal quote, being able to look at our budgets relative to that quote, and assess that we can stay on track under this mechanism with those numbers. If we get a quote and we find it's out of whack for some reason, we don't have to continue down this road. We can fall back on a traditional bid and installation process, but based on what we've seen so far, we're optimistic that this will work out. So, manufacture and delivery would hopefully have the units to us by mid-July, leaving a month and a half for an installation of approximately 25 rooms at the Riverside School. Now, there may be some work that would continue slightly into the school year, depending ultimately on when those units arrive. So, we will have, we believe, time, assuming our 12-week assumption, for the units to arrive in July, have time to install those units, have them operating prior to the end of the summer. There's ancillary work such as casework installations and so forth around the units that would then follow the unit installation, and our hope would be that the bulk of that could be completed, if not all of that, completed prior to the end of the summer. So, the possibility that some of that work, including, you know, the outside patching and masonry and so forth where the vents would go, you know, might carry over into the fall, but our goal would be to minimize that carryover. If it does carry over, it would be second shift work, meaning after school hours, the work would not continue while the school session was happening in the fall if that was the case. The second one listed is we're also doing upgrades to the electrical service. Specifically, we're doing this at each of the schools. However, the elementary schools in this case are the focus of what you see up here. Yes?
Is it easier just to ask questions on the AC? Maybe we should talk about AC.
Absolutely. Yeah, if you'd like.
Okay. So, when you say the Board's buying the units, I was just curious who was actually placing?
Microphone?
Sorry. When you say the Board is actually buying the units, is Tom placing the POs or you guys placing the POs?
No, Tom would place the POs. The district would make the purchase as you would with any other equipment that you would purchase district-wide.
Okay. And I'm confused. Are these units that go in the window? Like, how big is a unit?
So, the units are fairly good size. If you use this room as a comparison, in the classrooms, we're taking up the slot occupied by one window. So, the unit is roughly a little bit larger than three foot by three foot on the floor and stands fairly tall. I don't know the full height. I think it's about six feet, and then it has an extension.
You don't have a photo or something?
I do not have a photo with me now.
I'm sorry. So, it's a window unit?
No. It's a floor unit. It will be a box, for lack of a better description.
But it's in the room?
It is in the classroom, yes.
And it does heat and air?
It does heat and air, and the advantage of these units... So, we talked about two different approaches primarily. One would be to replace the current unit ventilators which sit horizontally in the room under the windows, replace those with similar units. But to provide air conditioning, that also requires a separate condenser like the air conditioning box you have outside your home would have to sit outside the classroom. Those types of configurations are noisier. They create service and maintenance issues long-term. So, this solution is a good solution, and it's commonly used by school districts because everything is contained in one unit. The unit is more easily serviced because everything is inside. If they have to service it, it's all one door. Everything is accessible there, filters and other equipment. The units are better performing because they have, one, they have active humidity control, which benefits the district. They also have an energy recovery system built into them, so that allows them to operate more energy efficiently. And we looked at these pros and cons, as I mentioned, with the teachers. We've reviewed it several times with the principals and with the Board Committee, and because of those advantages, that approach was selected.
All right. And do these also do the HVAC?
This is heating, ventilating, and air conditioning all through this one unit.
And they have a humidifying?
A de-humidifying system, yes.
So, if going forward, we could see photos because I have...
I can actually send... Try and send you a link.
Okay.
If you look up vertical unit ventilators.
Air ventilation.
And just look under images. You'll see in classrooms as well as separate units.
Oh, okay.
And Scott, can you mention also the fact that you consulted with Princeton University and how that went, what you did there?
We did, yeah, thank you. So, we did... The district had reached out to Princeton University. One of their facility folks took a meeting with us. We sat down, reviewed the unit in detail, the approach to how we were installing them in the buildings, and received a fairly positive response. He did have some suggestions, which we are incorporating into our process, one of which had been previously suggested by Epic and was reinforced by Scott Sepse from Princeton University, which is the approach that we're taking here, namely to procure the units directly and bid the installation separately.
And, Scott, one of the priorities I had initially going into this process, one was to try and get AC into all of the elementary schools right away in the first summer. The other priority, of course, is to make sure that we do the projects right and that we are not interfering with instruction at least as much as possible. So, can you talk through a little bit the rationale as to why the recommendation, which I think the Facilities Committee agreed with, was to go with sort of a pilot school first and to start off smaller for just one summer?
Certainly. Yeah, certainly. So, the approach was for several reasons. One, our limited time, as I mentioned. So, right out of the gate, we had a concern about the risk, which you always face with a school project over the summer, that that project continues in a meaningful way into the fall. The risk of undertaking this project at all the schools at the same time poses the risk that all the schools could potentially still be under construction in the fall, depending on, you know, situations and what could arise. So, that is always a concern. So, we thought better to focus it in one location. That allows the work to, we feel, happen a little more efficiently, and, you know, we can watch it and pick a scale, and that's why Riverside being the smaller of the schools, pick a scale that we feel is a manageable piece for the summer. Now, additionally, as a pilot project, even at Riverside, we have a range of different conditions that this installation has to accommodate in terms of the age of the rooms and the conditions of the flooring and the casework and the outside conditions where the louvers have to be installed. So, as a... Looking at it as a pilot, it allows us to basically vet the approach to how those installations will work in the different conditions, and therefore, anything we learn on this first school, we can accommodate and incorporate into the projects that move on to the other schools, which theoretically means that we can approach those in a much more efficient and effective manner.
And have you installed these type of things before?
Yes. Yes, we have. They're pretty common installation for schools for the reasons I outlined.
And has Epic as well.
Yes.
And the other important point to me, as I was listening to the conversation at the Facilities Committee meeting, is that the current AC can remain on in those rooms as the installation takes place. So, in our hot and humid summers, we can put on the AC as needed.
Correct. Correct. The existing window units, which will be removed as part of this process and replaced by these units, we're installing these units in a different location than the existing window units. So, those can remain until construction's done, continue to operate so that they can... You guys can maintain temperature and conditions in the schools, and then, once the new units are operating, those old units would be removed.
And Scott, do these vertical units, as opposed to the older horizontal units, do they have an energy savings element to them?
So, the vertical units do. The energy recovery system that's built into the design of those units allows them to operate more efficiently because they reclaim cool air and hot air from the building before it's exhausted out. So, it makes them more efficient in operation than the other units. And also acoustically, they're better performing. So, the ones that we will specify, there are actually three different types. There's a base unit, a middle unit, and then a more advanced unit which has an acoustical package with it to further reduce the acoustic perform... The acoustic noise from those units, and that's the one that we're looking to install.
Great. Okay.
So, if Riverside is done as a pilot, if Riverside is done as a pilot, then this summer, what's the proposal on the rest of the elementary schools when they would?
So, the remainder of the schools, if you look at the bottom of the screen, right, so, we would obviously continue to develop those documents, but in order to take care of the lead time issue that we're struggling with right now, we would look to bid those additional schools at some point in the fall, so this fall. And that way, the contract can be awarded early, the contractor can come on board, they can order those units well in advance of the summer so that that lead time issue is taken out of the equation for that work to take place. So, you know, how we approach the remainder of the schools, we think, given this approach, it may be possible to do all the other schools next summer. That's currently our thinking process. But again, depending how this project goes, we may, you know, we may look to tailor that according to how this project performs.
The other important factor here for the Board members to realize, as we were considering the pacing of this project, was we have summer programming that happens. We have hundreds of kids in our schools in the summer, and so, we had to consider that as well with the construction schedule, and having all four being impacted at the same time really didn't make sense. By doing Riverside first, it allows us to have swing space the following summer when we have to do the other three buildings.
I have a few questions. Thank you for presenting this. It's very helpful. In order... I appreciate that you'd like to look at this as a pilot for one school. In order to choose the school, did you think simply about size or were principals consulted regarding immediate needs such as humidity levels at some of the schools? Things that we spoke about that the air conditioning coming in would really help? And I'm not sure those issues... Okay. So, they were...
And Riverside is one where I think we could absolutely benefit from having this right away.
Sooner rather than later.
Staff and the principal would appreciate that, yes.
Okay. So, Riverside is small, which is great for a pilot program, but there's also fewer students. So, I'm just thinking about impact on kids. We've actually chosen the smallest number of kids to impact the first year, which I understand may be necessary to roll this out well. I assume there's a reason why we wouldn't put a few at every school. Are you doing... Is there an installation where you're setting up an entire system? Or is it something that could... Is there any possibility of impacting a portion of every school, perhaps the most humid locations in every school?
So, we did talk about that approach, but stuck with our original thought process on the one school. The primary reason is that it makes the construction process far more complicated. So, you've got the design and the permitting at each of the schools. You have, as I mentioned, a range of conditions at each of the schools. So, even if we picked a selection of a small group of rooms at each of the schools, we would probably still have to do... Have all the electrical upgrades in place for that to happen because the electrical upgrade is necessary to support the air conditioning system that's being installed. So, by picking one school, while we're putting out the electrical upgrades for all the elementaries in one package, we can stipulate that Riverside is the priority in terms of that installation so that it meshes with this installation. That's much harder to do if we're spreading it across the four schools.
Actually, a great question. Those are the kinds of thinking. And I encourage the Board to ask these questions so that we're all on the same page with how we move forward. The other issue with the approach that we did consider is that it wouldn't give us that swing space the following summer.
It would only give us those pieces of the school.
Right.
I don't think I ever understood before that they were classroom-based. How do hallways... How are hallways and things like that cool? I'm sorry, I'm not on the Facilities Committee. I'm asking lots of questions, but as a former teacher and the parent of an elementary school student, I'm thinking a lot about this.
Yeah. So, some of the hallways have augmenting systems. Schools, by nature, hallways are often treated differently because there's actually a fairly high level of air exchange between the classrooms with door openings and so forth that occur in the school. So, our engineers are looking at that, and to the degree that they have a concern about that balance not being what it needs to be, we will augment those hallways further. But right now, their belief at Riverside is that it's just the classrooms that need to be done.
And can I ask one last question?
Can I speak to that too? We also talked about, do we do a small pilot? Do we do a whole-school pilot? And I think, you know, we were advised that a whole-school pilot is a little bit more risky in the sense you've got more rooms that are being ripped apart and we have to get the kids back in there by the fall. But we were also saying it's good to have a pilot of the whole system, so have a whole building done, and then we see what happens with the hallways, and then we get a better sense. So, anyone else chime in? We had a very lively discussion at Facilities Committee about a lot of these things, and it's great if we can bring it all up again because I think everyone should hear it.
It reinforces five-year work.
Another thought, and again, I think about this as a former teacher, the space that the unit takes up, it doesn't sound like it's... Sounds like three by three?
It's about three and a half feet by four feet, maybe?
And you said that the current heating... Our current heating units will eventually be removed?
Yeah. So, the current units get removed, and those units will get replaced with bookshelves. So, you're actually going to increase the amount of storage within the room from what those classrooms have now.
And we made sure to consult teachers and principals. Because I was a teacher, elementary school teacher too, so I wanted my reading corner where it was and liked the way my classroom was set up, and I know how teachers react. But they actually had an opportunity to come together to look at the unit and...
They also want air conditioning too.
They want air conditioning. They want it to be quiet. So, they actually were all in agreement that the vertical units were the way to go.
Great. I just had one last question. Is there any... I'm just thinking about the three schools that will go another full year without any air conditioning. Is there any ability, if this goes well?
You're just correct. They actually do have air conditioning.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. But this new system. If this goes well, is there any way that we could do second shift? I know that's likely more expensive and would take more time.
It's a great question. I asked the same one.
Okay.
So, here's what I'm learning, so I can share before Kathy jumps in to tell us. It's not as simple as just like taking a unit out and plopping one in and plugging it in. Like, it's messy work, and it takes time and do...
Kathy could tell us.
Maybe Kathy could tell us, yes. So, I'm just trying to present what I learned. But go ahead, Kathy. Why is it not great to do it at second shift work?
So, it would have an impact on teaching and learning, yourself?
It would, yeah.
Okay.
So, in order for them to put the new unit in, they'll take the... They'll have to take the UV out. They're running... So, from the corridor, they're going to put... Well, either the corridor, I think in Riverside, we found they're actually right on the side, but it doesn't matter. The main run of the piping, the hot water pipes that feeds the unit, they'll have to run new pipes across the ceiling to the new unit. All the old pipes have to come out. The old UV comes out, the bookcases come out, then they have to put the new unit in. Putting the new unit is venting through an old window, so the window has to get taken apart, and then they put the vent in, then they put new stuff around the window. So, by the time you go through all these steps, it takes weeks. You know, I mean, in the summer, they'll do it in phases. One crew will come in, do the demo, then they'll pull the pipe. But doing that in second shift...
Not something you can teach during. Okay. Thank you very much. This is very helpful.
You can't just come in at night and do a little bit of that and then have the kids back there the next day.
Thank you. You also... You keep saying pilot, which makes me not feel confident that it's... And you say you've used these units and they have. So, the word pilot to me is like, oh, we're going to try it, and if we like it, we'll continue. But pilot's not really the word.
Perhaps not. We're using the word just because it's the first of these installations here in the district. You know, in terms of these installations, we've been doing them with districts for many years. I have full confidence in the equipment. We have full confidence in how it operates because we've seen it operate successfully. So, it's not a pilot in that sense.
I might want to change the word.
But it is the first installation. We may refer to it as the initial installation.
That's better. That's better.
So, the initial installation.
First way, foundational, whatever.
The other question, is it more of a cost-savings for us to order them all at once and then ask for a delivery at different times?
No, not necessarily.
Really?
So, the, you know, the manufacturers, they tend to work like a freight train, right? Car's in the station, car moves out of the station. So, we place the order, the next 25 that come off the line go to us, right? If we break it up, we risk the potential that some piece of that order could, you know, get snagged in the process. So, we would face an increased risk of delays in terms of the delivery of that equipment. And just it's more effective and more efficient for contractors to order, say, I need this many units, deliver them. The date comes, they move them into place, and then they gradually work through the installation.
Scott, I'm following up on that question.
That's odd. I mean, in terms of manufacturing, like, you know, you would think they'd really want the orders and they'd know exactly... Because then they would backtrack when they need to order all the little pieces. So, I just want to make sure we're not spending more because we're not ordering... You know, say, we need 100. I have no idea how many. You know, that we're not getting more, you know, economies of scale because we need so many. I would hope that we're looking at that.
We are looking at that, and we're going to watch it very carefully in terms of the budgets. The, you know, we're ordering through the co-op. The prices are predefined in effect, although we will work with the contractor and get a quote, and we can negotiate that price. But we are doing one school rather than all schools. So, you know, there is the potential that there's a volume discount in a sense, that if you have a single contractor doing 100 units versus 25 units, that contractor's going to be more efficient on the whole, and you may see that efficiency in a bid price. But in our case, we're not doing one or two units. We're doing 25. So, we're confident it should be relatively efficient in terms of the installation pricing.
No, that's exactly what I'm asking.
But I think my question is, we're going to eventually do not 25, but 160-plus, right? So, with the balance of the units for the other schools, are we going to put those out for bid?
Yes.
And will we then have the possibility of getting a actually lower bid on a larger number?
Isn't that what I just said? Yeah.
No. Well, you're actually asking to buy them all now.
No, no, no.
Because if we're paying the co-op price, the co-op price is a set amount that actually is probably a little bit higher than the price we may get if we were to bid.
No, I said, would you order them all so you get a discount? You know, because we're not just doing 25. We're doing 100 or whatever it is.
Yeah. So, any project like this is a balancing of dozens of considerations, so price being a preeminent one of those. But schedule, success of the installation, risk associated with the contractor, all of these things have been discussed and have been, you know, part of our consideration. So, even in the next phase, when we look at doing the other three schools, for example, we're still discussing, is it best to bid that out as one package? Or would it make more sense for different reasons to bid it out as maybe two packages? Two schools to one contractor, one school to another contractor? I don't know the answer for you right now, but I can tell you that we will be looking at all those scenarios because our goal is to get you guys the best installation at the best price we can. But that best installation is a balancing of schedule considerations and a lot of other things.
Is the contractor the manufacturer?
No. The contractor is a different party.
So, I'm talking about the manufacturing of the units. So, maybe I'm... So, what I'm saying is the units.
Can you explain the difference between the co-op? Can you explain the difference between the co-op purchasing and then the bidding? Because I didn't understand this either, Debbie.
Sure.
It's different. Co-op, you specify what you're buying.
Correct.
And they also supply the install? No?
No, so the co-op is similar to state contracts. So various companies have already bid to the co-op and Airdale was the manufacturer that was selected by the co-op based on those bids that they received. Similarly, there is a contractor that is associated with that Airdale co-op arrangement. So we have the option, we can buy just the contract, just the equipment, I'm sorry, from that co-op. We can buy the equipment and the installation. The co-op allows us to structure it in different ways. The reason we don't have to bid is that the co-op has effectively bid under the law on your behalf statewide. And that's the process that they go through for everything. I'm sure you guys buy other things under the co-op, equipment or supplies or so forth. It functions very similarly.
And one other benefit of that as well is what you said, Scott, which is that in order to be placed on a list like that, it's been not only bid already, but there's also, there's a little bit of a quality control aspect to it as well.
Sure, yeah, absolutely there is. I mean, the co-ops watch that, they solicit feedback and receive feedback from districts that use their products throughout the state. So, you know, you can be assured that if they were receiving negative feedback from districts on a particular product, they are less likely to feature that product moving forward, yeah.
And Scott, just make sure I recall correctly, we've been talking about the Airdale unit, but that's one of many manufacturers. And by going through the co-op, we know we get the Airdale unit. But in the future, if we do one large bid package or multiple bid packages under New Jersey state law, isn't it the case that they can, the contractor can substitute a different manufacturer if it has the same specifications?
Yeah, so in a public bid, it's an all equal situation. So contractors will often propose substitutions. The acceptance of that substitution is not automatic. We review it, we establish very clear criteria in the spec, it has to meet those criteria, not just technically, but performance-wise and other factors that we write into the specifications. So we write the specifications in a way to give you as much protection over that as possible, that somebody could substitute an inferior product. There are other manufacturers and they do have installations that we see on a regular basis. So we would make sure that we're in a position to be very careful about that selection. But yes, under a public bid, we would be subject to the potential for substitutions.
And we're comfortable with, I guess that sounds really, I mean...
Comfortable with what?
Substitutions.
No, that's why we're doing this, so we make sure we get exactly what we want. That's what I like to do. We're getting the unit we want.
And this is the way of getting them fast, so we're paying a little bit more, we're specifying exactly what we want and we're getting them much sooner than we would if we went out to bid. And so for the rest of it, my understanding is we would then go out to bid in a normal timeframe for the larger chunk, like you said, so you get a benefit from a scale purchase.
But in that second round, I mean, they're two totally different, they're similar, but they're different processes. So we get the Airdale because they already have the contract with the co-op. If we don't use the co-op the second time, which is on balance more expensive, I believe, and we go out to bid one or two different contractors, the law allows them to substitute comparable equipment to the one we specked out. So Scott said, it would have to be an equivalent unit if it doesn't have the Airdale name, it would be another name that has to perform at the same level. My point is just that's something we have to be very careful about and understand, that, you know, the actual name on the units and some aspects of the performance could change from school to school. And if we have more than one bid, I presume we could end up with three types of units.
And, no, you're accurate and that's something that we will watch very carefully in how we structure things.
Is that, I understand this is sort of the way it happens, but is that best practice? Where what if one of the brands does not perform as well as the others and then you have an entire school that for whatever reason, it might be the most expensive one that, you know, but this is just typically how these are done.
Public bid is an open bid process, meaning substitutions are allowed to be proposed. As I indicated, that doesn't mean automatic acceptance. So, you know, we vet them carefully, that includes their performance, we check references, we don't just accept a substitution and move on. So we will look as carefully at any proposed substitution under that scenario as we would the product we're using as the basis of design, yeah.
Scott, we had discussed an expedited approval and procurement process so that the units would hopefully be here on July 1st, which would give us more time to install them and make sure they're ready when the school starts. Is that still the case?
So our target for the units is mid-July. We think we might be able to possibly push that forward towards July 1, that's our goal. But until an order is placed, we don't have a definitive manufacturing timeframe. So that's, our target right now, mid-July, we feel, gives us the time for those units to be installed and be operating for start of school. And as I mentioned, some work may remain, some of the cleanup work, some of the masonry work outside the building and so forth. But our goal would be to absolutely have the units up and operating and as much of that work as possible done prior to start of school.
So also, oh, go ahead. Well, just to follow up on that, I think in Finance Committee, I think it was suggested by the committee that we put this procurement on next week's agenda so that we are able to get these units as quickly as possible. So we, for the board's knowledge, we will be seeing this next week as an approval item.
Yeah, so we've started the process of soliciting the quotation and getting that information together for you, so we're already moving, already moving towards that goal.
So wouldn't we do that with the second round, that we would have, we would buy them ourselves? Wouldn't that be the smart way to go in?
It's certainly something that can be entertained. I'm not saying it can't be, but, you know, we, right now, we're anticipating a bid process for that second round, but that's not to say that this isn't an option.
The other thing I was thinking, if we have three different units, that means maintenance needs how to use, how to fix or work on three different ones, which, you know, isn't the best.
Correct.
Yeah. And you might need different tools and, you know, just starts adding up to everything.
I think Gary said he would actually come out of retirement to support that process.
Oh, awesome, okay, I didn't know that, then I'm good, then I'm good.
But if everything's compared, like apples, the...
But you know they're not.
But the differences in maintenance should not be negligible, really.
Can I just, last question, I promise. As we think about the summer of 2020 and think about all the student programs we run, you had mentioned, Steve, that we'll have swing space at Riverside. Can we think during the summer of 2019, I'm sure you're already doing this, and make a plan of how many classrooms are used at JP? How many are used at CP? Will the rec department have to rent from a private school instead of CP? I mean, all of these things, I'm not sure Riverside can be enough swing space for all of the things that happen in our schools. So if we have a year to consider the other three, if we can, you know, really map that out for what that will look like.
So that consideration process is starting. It will look at exactly what you described, summer programs and things. As I go through the schedules, you see that next summer is going to be a very busy time. We're going to be looking at swing space for more than just summer programs at the elementary schools. So there's going to be a lot to consider. We're gonna be focusing in the development of a logistics plan for how this would happen, particularly centered around the middle school and the high school work, which is gonna be a major project that will cross over to next summer.
And Scott, if it's just okay, if I can just take two seconds, you know, just to summarize some of the discussion, and this is really good discussion that follows on a very good discussion at yesterday's Facilities Committee. So one of the things that we went into the discussion yesterday morning was talking about the need to move the projects forward versus the need to make sure we're doing it correctly. So I don't want to put the blame on either Scott or on Epic. I think it was me or one of the other members of the Facilities Committee that talked about Riverside being a pilot and we can change that name, but one of the things that, at least personally, after the discussion yesterday morning appealed to me was this idea that we are sort of doing a hybrid here. We're able to roll it out to one school with the benefits that that'll give to the students and the teachers there, but at the same time, we can also make mid-course changes as we go forward to the second summer, which is, Scott, you're saying is gonna be a much busier time and with many more projects. So I at least personally came away from the discussion yesterday sort of with feeling good about this approach, that it's a deliberate move forward, but also trying to do it as quickly as possible and thinking about ways that we can expedite to make sure that the first summer goes as well as possible and we can learn from that.
Thanks, Greg.
Tom? I just want to clarify this expedited purchasing issue that we were just talking about. Scott, it's my understanding that we will not have the financial details for next week's meeting, correct?
We may not. We've started the process of getting the quote, we don't know if we'll have it in full form by next week's meeting.
So just to clarify what we would be doing at next week's meeting, since we wouldn't have that information, is, as Scott has mentioned, time is of the essence. Every day is important to us to try to get these units ordered as quickly as possible. Assuming that we do not have pricing information, we would put a resolution on the agenda to authorize the Facilities Committee to approve the purchase in between board meetings, once we do have that information. And then that information would then be presented to the board at the subsequent meeting after that is done, so that you could formally approve that amount. Any questions on that? Because that's the way the resolution most likely will appear.
Would you have a max number or a max amount that we would give the Facilities Committee?
I'd have to rely on Epic and Scott whether they could do that for us.
I would think we should be able to get to a max number, yeah.
I have an idea, but just ask.
Well, let's put it this way, if it's through the roof, we're probably not going to be presenting it because we do have budgetary concerns about that.
Co-op has a, I mean, it has a price difference.
Right, but not the installation part, we'd have to cost all that out.
That would be the installation.
That's what?
The parts being bid, the installation.
We're getting, well, we're getting a proposal from the contractor that's listed under the co-op, that's the process we're initiating. But we've also looked at that we can bid that work just as easily, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to meet track, go ahead.
Okay, so other projects on the priority list here in terms of various needs. So the electric upgrades, as I mentioned, at the elementary schools. So our goal is to be bidding this by mid-April, bring in the bid so that award can be made at the May board meeting and then construction on the electrical upgrades would occur through the summer. So electrical equipment is more readily available than the HVAC units, manufacturing timeframes are less of a concern there. We're also in process on the air conditioning at the gymnasium at the high school. So I failed to mention and I should clarify, at Riverside, what we're focused on are the classrooms, okay? We're also doing the air conditioning, the multipurpose room, that's a different type of system. That will be done with the other projects when they are bid. That's rooftop equipment that's not available through the co-op, so a different system and scenario there. The, so the AC and the gym at the high school, similar schedule to the electrical, we're in the process of preparing those drawings, those documents now. I think I failed to update the date because the date of the bid period would actually be the same as the electrical there. So we're looking to bid that by mid-April and have the same award cycle as listed for the electrical by the May meeting and moving that forward accordingly.
The AC, the gym, is this...
So security vestibules, doors and hardware. So we're doing these upgrades, these upgrades impact the elementary schools, vestibules also at the middle school and the high school. So for the high school, we're anticipating probably doing that improvement with the high school improvements as a whole. It fits well, the contractor would be buying the same equipment for the broader projects that would associate with that and the vestibule entry condition at the high school is different and can be managed a little bit differently. So the middle school and the elementary schools are in the process of finalizing the designs, we're working closely with the district to work through that and that will include, I believe, a broader discussion about some of the district's security protocols and practices and so forth. So the vestibules are not the security solution in the big picture, but they're merely a component of an overall security process that is part of what the district does on a regular basis. So these vestibules would look, we would look to work through that decision-making process and complete the documents so that bidding could happen May to June. These projects, which includes the vestibules and the door replacements and hardware replacements throughout those buildings for both accessibility and lockdown capability, would happen over the summer, but then run through the fall. So this work is fairly easily accommodated during the school period because it's easily accommodated on second shift. So the school lets out, the second shift contractor comes in, they do a half dozen doors that evening, next day the teachers come in, they have new doors. It's a much cleaner, much easier to manage in that regard. So fairly common that we do that work in that manner and that's our plan here because of the timeframe involved. Again, we have lead time on doors and hardware and the time involved in installing, I think we have roughly 330 doors across those schools. Now, at the high school, we...
Can I ask a question about the vestibules? So if that happens after school, students are in our schools obviously after 3 o'clock, a lot of students at the high school, a lot of students at the middle school and often elementary school clubs and other things. Do you expect that any of that programming would have to be limited while we're, while we have, you know, workers in the building or will there be security or other personnel there to...
Well, so in terms of the impact on the school, we will develop a phasing plan with the school that will take programs into consideration. So if there are certain rooms that need to be used, you know, we'll try to plan out ahead of time so that the principal or others at the school will know that program needs to move to a different room or something like that. And the, you know, the security consideration for workers in the school, as Epic had mentioned previously, they have a system that they utilize that allows them to track and screen workers as they enter the schools.
I just didn't want anyone, any of us to assume there were no students in the school after the school day.
Correct.
So, there are many, thank you.
So as part of the work at the high school, one of the components was the conversion of the bookstore to a remote dining area. So our recent discussion identified that this was a priority, so we're in the process of moving that forward and separate from the balance of the high school project. So we're gonna be, I reached out to Gary so we can arrange meetings with the appropriate folks there at the high school to gather input on how this space needs to work, how it should be outfitted and so forth. We're gonna be meeting with them over the next couple of weeks and hammering out those details and of course, we'll come back to the board and we'll meet with, you know, there may be other groups that want to be part of that process, we'll fold them into those discussions as well. But our goal is to work through the design and come up with a package that we can bid early this summer as school ends and begin construction through summer into the fall on that space. We don't know the full details of what's gonna be involved yet, so the schedule is a little bit of a guess. Our goal would be to tighten it up and do as much as possible during the summer, but we have to work out the details on that. So item number six that you see up here is kind of a very large catch-all. So we have a large project at the high school, as you're aware, we have the installation of the second floor and the change to the fitness center, we have the second floor addition, we have the guidance renovations, we have the security vestibule, and we also have a project at the middle school. This is the renovation of the old library space and the nurses' area toward the front of the building. And then we have the improvements at the fields on both the middle school and the high school campus, including the bathrooms at the stadium. So group number six kind of encompasses all of that, okay? Now, a big part of this project happening effectively and in a way that the district can survive this project and still continue to operate is a pretty key consideration. So you'll see right at the top of the list, the creation of a logistics plan. So we're working, starting to think through this now. This will include consideration of what space, if any, might need to be vacated and for what times at the high school, if we need temporary space, how are we going to accommodate that? Where do we put it? What are the alternative ways that we can look at satisfying those needs? What program... needs? What programs? There's a lot that we need to kind of pack into that discussion, and we're starting that process now. So ultimately, it will result in a logistics plan that will say, this is going to happen at these times and temporary space goes here. This becomes part of the construction documents moving forward as well. So this plan really serves as a foundation for these projects. Now, while we've done a fair amount of planning with the high school and related to the guidance, we still have a fair amount of program and detailed planning associated with the addition and the fitness space. We've also had a series of discussions at the middle school, but that process is ongoing for the space there. So there's still a lot of interaction and input that has to happen on these projects, and that will come in the next several months as we begin to develop the designs and details. We will come back to you and be showing you elevations for what the outside of the high school might look like, detailed plans. All of this will happen on a regular basis as we move through the spring and the summer. Our goal is to bid this around September, as you see up there, and have bids so that construction could start, say, end of October, November 1, and run through the following summer. And again, major caveat on that assumption right now. It all depends on how we work out the logistics plan associated with this work.
Because these are three different places, I think, would it be more helpful if we had three different programs going across?
Well, so I've kind of based what you see listed up here on our anticipated bid packages. Right now, our thinking from discussions with Epic is that, you know, the potential to bid that project as a large project to a single contractor might give us better control over the activities across those two campuses and a better bid result because a large contractor can be more efficient in tackling those types of projects. Again, as we develop the logistics plan, we may find reasons to question that thought process, but that's where our thinking is right now. So that's why it's listed together. I can break out additional detail. We have a schedule that's more detailed than this. I just tried to summarize it for the purpose of this meeting.
Yeah, no, I think for right now, but again, I mean, you'd want to see the field separate and, you know, the middle school separate and the high school, you know, once you kind of get the logistics part. I think it'd be better to see them all three.
Yep, we can do that.
Because they're so different.
Do you have any, do you know of any best practices? I'm thinking with my calendar brain, right? We're going to need a long summer of 2020. So do you know of school districts that have maximized summer by starting as late? I'm not sure. We couldn't start September 30. We need to get to work. But what have schools, we don't even have to answer this now, but I'd like to think, but I'm just wondering, like, we can't get out any earlier this year because we've already set our calendar, right? But maybe there are creative ways. So I'd like, at some point, let's talk about best practices. Do students ever, I don't even want to say the word Saturday, but how, if we need this time in the summer of 2020, how could we get that? But we have a year to think about.
Yeah, well, we don't have a full year to think about it.
Right.
But we are thinking about it. And we will be discussing it in a lot of detail with the district. I don't have the answer to your question tonight as to whether any of that would make sense, but we will consider that along with all the other options.
Great. And to Debbie's point, we could revise the calendar we've just created for 1920. Not that we want to go back to version 99, but I think, yeah, that would be great to just think out of the box.
PD days, maybe move more of them to the end of the year, which I know is not what we want to do, but I do know schools have done that in the past.
Or the more is in the beginning, the later.
Yeah.
Right.
Teachers move it, not students.
Right, right.
To be discussed. Thank you.
Do you have any idea when you'd be starting the building by the fields at the high school for the bathrooms?
I don't at this point. The engineer has completed their survey. We're waiting for that survey information to come back so that we can dig into the details as to that building, how it needs to be connected utility-wise. Their survey includes where all the utilities are out there in terms of sewer water and so forth. So we don't know yet, but we should know relatively soon, within the next couple of weeks.
Are you thinking this summer or summer 2020?
No, we're thinking next summer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Quick question. We talked about timing of bids to maximize the chance of getting, not ending up with contractors whose reputations are not that great. Some of these projects are on the small size. Is it a concern at all, especially with the vestibules and the remote dining that we'll be bidding in late May and early June, that some people already have their summer schedules full and we won't have as many firms bidding? Is that something we should worry about at all?
Less of a concern, given that those are smaller projects. They're going to appeal to smaller firms. You know, those firms are not really in a position to take on, you know, more work than they can handle. So firms that would bid that are going to have the bandwidth to do it. But we will be watching bids. We bid a lot of work every year. We've always watched those bids and we see how the results are coming back. You know, if costs begin to escalate, it's a sure sign the contractors are overloaded and they're, you know. So we'll look for those red flags and, you know, we can always adjust if we need to. But right now, we think we'll be okay.
In the legend, what is the circle? What is Epic 50%?
Yeah, so I'm sorry. As I went through there, I didn't highlight that. So as part of Epic Services, they're doing a, they have an estimating process. So they're doing that at roughly, we'll say, 50% completion and then at a point prior to bid, say, 80% to 90% completion. So the two circles you see there are their two checks on the estimate based on, called preliminary partial drawings, and then full drawings prior to bid. So, you know, they're going to be doing multiple checks and watching as we go along to make sure that we're staying on track. And then, just as we do our own internal quality control before documents go out to bid, Epic, as part of their services, will do what they call constructibility review. So they'll be looking for issues in our drawings that we need to clarify. They will also be looking at it from the contractor's perspective of, you know, the phasing we've laid out. Is that going to work? What problems does that create? You know, and they're going to try and identify those upfront before we put those projects out to bid. So the triangle is something that would happen just prior to bid, and that's what that designates.
And what will we be getting in terms of money spent? I mean, you know, we have 100, and this month you spent five, and that month you spent 10. I mean, will the board be seeing to see how we're tracking against what we've been approved for?
So we will start reporting every month to you as to what the status is in terms of expenditures and allocations. Once we award bids, we have some idea how that bid compares to the project budget, and then how that bid gets spent out, or those monies get issued on a monthly basis. So we will be updating you regularly on that.
And does that go to facilities? Does that come to the board meeting?
Honestly, that's up to you guys. I mean, it can be reported in any number of ways.
Yeah, we'll include the reports that they give to you in whatever package we use through Board Docs. Additionally, on your monthly financial reports that you get, the board secretary report, all of this is going to be segregated into a separate fund.
Okay.
So you'll be able to track things that way as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
I know this, we're not, we have other things to accomplish, so this might not be the time, but I have some questions on, and I know members of the public have inquired about the process by which estimates are, you know, made and, you know, the rigor that, you know, is applied and how you track those moving parts, what we're doing right now against the budgets we have for projects in the future to make sure that we're not overspending early at the expense of what comes later. So that's sort of two parts. One, how do you do the estimating? And two, how do you keep track of the things you're doing early in the project to make sure that they don't crowd out things that come later in the project? So maybe not this evening, but...
I've been here.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you wanted to add anything to this presentation, you can start with answering the question that Brian posed, but you know, you're sorry.
And this is Kathy and Mike Tartaglia.
So, I mean, we would work with Scott. I mean, basically, you know, you have a budget, and the budget has assigned amounts to each of these projects allocated. And so as we bid them, I mean, we definitely have a budget. And we would put in alternates and just, you know, God forbid, like, the security vestibule, just for argument's sake, was budgeted $100,000, and the bid's committed $200,000. We just, we can't accept that bid, and we know that. And then we have to relook at the scope of that piece because, you know, we have to keep each piece within. But, you know, you also, some things will come high, some will come a little lower. And, you know, and we keep an overall tracking of each piece and as it goes along. And, you know, when we can put in alternates, we will. And if there's things that, you know, maybe you'd like a slightly better version of something, we can put that in as an alternate. If we can afford it, we can afford it. If we can't, I mean, it's a whole, I mean, I've been working with Scott at Hamilton now for about two years, and it's a process of each little piece. And you have to keep an overall spreadsheet and track each item as you go along. And I'm, we estimate, we're contractors as well as construction managers, so we estimate in-house every project. And we have a pretty good database of what things are selling for because we're constantly bidding our own work. So, does that answer what you're looking for?
Yes, but in that example you gave of the hypothetical $100,000 budget where it comes in at $2,000, and it's security vestibules.
Well, I mean, so then I think you have to look...
I assume there's a check back in with the board to say, well, maybe we should be spending more because that's such a critical part of the project.
Exactly. Or, you know, or maybe we look at it and we say, well, you know, we looked at doing this type of system, but maybe we should look, maybe you just looked at curtain wall and storefronts cheaper. So maybe we should look at, you know, a different style of vestibule. Maybe, you know, there's other materials. Maybe, you know, maybe the doors shouldn't be all glass. Maybe in some cases, we could put in FRP doors, which would be a little less expensive than full glass doors. I mean, I don't, I mean, they could be, you know, I just picked that as an example. It could be any. I mean, really, the biggest pieces are like the high school and the middle school where there's multiple options of things you could bid, and quality of products and different products and different scenarios.
Yeah, and it goes beyond materials. You know, if we get a bid that's out of sync with where we think it should be, we're also going to look at how it's bid. So if we're bidding the vestibules as a project, well, maybe we should be bidding the vestibules with some larger scope of work to try and manage, you know, the mobilization costs and the other considerations.
Yeah, just for an example, I mean, we recently bid a very large 10-school with Speel for just door replacement. And this is the second phase of the door replacement. The first phase was part of a much bigger package, and that came in, the bids came in a little high. This time, we just bid the doors as its own package, and we were really pleased with the bids because it was only bid by door companies, specifically do doors. So, I mean, those are things we maybe would want to consider when you have something so specialized but large enough. It was really appealing to them, and we were very happy. The bids came in lower than we had expected. So that's also an option, too, for certain specialties. Like, you have a lot of door replacement here, too, which that may be an option.
While you're both there, we've been focusing more of our time and attention as a community and as a district on sustainability and sustainable operations. Is that a lens that you've already looked through or will be looking through as this process progresses?
Yeah, it's a lens we're always looking through. So, you know, even with a project such as door replacements, you know, we're looking at sustainability relative to the doors that are going in. We're looking at how doors that are coming out are being disposed of and considerations like that. So the level of sustainability considerations varies, obviously. With the high school project, it's much broader because the scope of that project is broader. But each project, even the small ones, it's something that is part of our design process.
I have a question for Epic. How extensive is your constructibility review? And would you be responsible for discovering any mistakes in the design documents?
I wouldn't say we're responsible for discovering, but we would be looking for all of them, and we would report, you know, fairly detailed list of everything we found to Speel and follow up with them on clarifications and corrections and coordination between the documents.
Is there any expectation the board itself or its designee on staff should be extensively reviewing these documents, too, to make sure that there are no mistakes that go in the design and then continue through the process?
Well, I, so I would, the process with Epic is, first of all, as I said before, it's not adversarial. I'm perfectly happy to have them identify things they see in our drawings, and we work with them to make sure those are picked up. We certainly can have the district be part of that process, you know, the discussions that we have in terms of the documents and the considerations and, you know, questions about whether something should be bid one way or another way or designed one way or another way. That said, we also would be providing the district with regular progress drawings as these developments occur. So the district is also welcome to review those in detail and provide us feedback.
Now, my hope is that we have a belt and suspenders, the belt brakes, which is the architecture. We have the suspenders to hold up what is necessary. And so I just wanted to encourage you in the constructibility process to take as much time as necessary to make sure that we get that right.
Now might be actually a good time, if you agree, to go over a little bit more about the process of how things will be reported to the district and the board and just sort of how accessible, you know, everything's going to be, all the, that we've been talking about.
Well, so today, I actually entered the project on our viewpoint software. So within another week, I will share the link with the board and administration. It's up and it's, you know, I'll start with Scott so he can upload some of the documentation he already has in place to start to share. And then from there, every one of you will have an access. You can go on. And it's all accessible for, you know, there'll be the meeting minutes and any kind of notes, the drawings and sketches. And that's basically will be our, really, the way we share all documentation will be in the viewpoint program.
And does that include sort of a real-time construction schedule as things are progressing?
So, yes, but in phases. I think when Garrett was here and he had...
Yes.
So the first phase, that's the only part that's set up now, is what will belong to just us as your consultants and the board.
Correct.
It'll be Scott and his consultants, the board and administration, and that particular file's already set up. Once we go out to bid, there'll be like a secondary folder set up, or a whole section that we will assign to the contractor. We still own it, but they can use it, too, and that will be real-time construction. Our files, submittals, any changes, the drawings, the dendums, the bid documents, everything will be on there for use by the contractor, but also visible for all of you to see as well. But the financials and things for that, for that, that we share.
Right.
Will be in our folder, not obviously in their folder, but...
And if I, sorry, Beth, did you want to go ahead?
No, go ahead.
No, I just was going to interject it beyond the internal communication that the board would all have access to. We are really committed to external communication to our community about the progress. And so I know we're looking to create a webpage with, where we can put the construction schedule, where we can put a page for each school so that it's clear that, you know, as the project unfolds, what's happening. We can put pictures of the vertical AC units there and pictures of the, you know, demolition in action and then, you know, the completed rooms as they progress. We're looking to also have, beyond just our web presence, we're looking to have actual occasional press releases as well as tours of our buildings and...
Forums.
Pardon?
Forums.
And forums about the progress held at the building, in the buildings themselves.
I mean, we could provide you with updates as often as you wish, photos, whatever, you know, put up there. I mean, our guys are out there every day taking pictures, so...
So when would that start in terms of material to us that we could put on our websites? Would that start like with the demolition or...
Sure.
Do you describe to us even before, maybe, do you give us something that's packaged that says, here's where the status of the bidding is?
Sure. We can do all that. I mean...
I think it's, you know, the sooner the better.
Well, we have, we have this, if the board agrees tonight with the construction schedule, that may be a good place to begin with an explanation as to why we're proceeding the way we are, based on the goals that we established tonight.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be, as I went through, as I noted, there was one error in the date. I'll correct that, and I'll provide you with a brief narrative that covers some of what we talked about tonight. You can use that. So I'll have that back to you shortly.
Could you just, on both pages or however many pages we make available, clearly date the documents?
Sure.
The documents, because we're going to have multiple versions, and they're going to change, so I want to make sure everybody's referring to the same one.
Yep.
And just to, just to add something else, and this is really more on the Facilities Committee, but one of the things we discussed yesterday, and one of the things we pledged to do, is to also think through not just the type of forms that we'll have for the public, but also setting up special working groups and other opportunities to have the public as involved as possible. So that's what the Facilities Committee is considering now, as we see the, as we take a look at the priorities and the schedule going forward, where we can put in opportunities in advance, so that the public is up to date in advance, as well as, you know, getting the real time.
Yeah, if I can, I'm sorry, Greg, if I just build on that, I see one, at least one of my teachers in the, in the public tonight, and we're looking to have, each of the buildings have referendum review teams headed by the principal, that would include interested teachers, parents as well, so that they're providing input, and also a vehicle for sharing out information to their constituents.
Great. Are there any further questions? Okay, thank you.
We're going to get to do this often, right?
Yeah, I guess that's the question, when are you coming back? When's the next time? Next month? Are we doing this maybe monthly?
You probably will see me at least monthly, if not 10 other times in between.
All right, we look forward to that. Thank you, Scott. Thank you to Epic, and thanks, Scott, for coming tonight. Great, and appreciate everyone's good, you know, questions, we, I'm sure we'll have lots of continued, continued questions as we go forward, and we certainly are having lively committee meetings as well, so that's all good. Then I think we can move on to the second item on our agenda tonight, which would be the budget.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to begin. I guess the first, the first place I would start is that, you know, budgets, they're, they're not really about dollars and cents, they're about people and programs, and so as we, as we build a budget, we're, we're building it based on programs, based on people, and we're building it for our children. This has, as this board knows, has been one of the most difficult budget processes this district has been through in terms of trying to balance a budget. We are, in just sort of summary, in terms of the, some of the constraints that we have faced, there's a 2% cap on the increase in the tax levy, we're probably looking at a 2% increase in CPI, more for energy, it's up to 4%, I think, in the Northeast for energy costs, we have contractual obligations that are above 2% for our people, and we have enrollment that goes up at greater than 2% a year. So, there are healthcare costs that are going up, this year, 8%, we have the, the impact of the charter school expansion that we've talked about in the past, that over the past three years, it's been about a 30% increase from three years ago. So we're seeing lots of factors that are driving way past that 2% line, that makes it very, very difficult for us from a long-term structural standpoint to, to have growing enrollment beyond the 2%, growing costs in multiple areas, and stay within that 2% cap. So, we began this process with a budget gap of really over $2 million, and we have been trying to, to bring that down to a balanced budget over the course of the past few months. So when Stephanie was here for her last meeting, I think we had talked about the fact that our healthcare costs had gone up to the point where we were entitled to that healthcare waiver, I forget the exact amount, maybe 400,000, 450,000, something in that nature, that range, brought our, we brought our gap down a little bit with that, and then we've been looking at, at people and programs to try and, to balance that budget. So, and we've tried in making any, any reductions to keep that as far away from the students and the teaching that is our, central to our mission, as far away from that as possible. We haven't been fully successful in doing that, and we can talk a little bit more, but as of, as of today, we are looking at a balanced budget, and Tom is going to talk us through how we got there, a little bit around about the state aid, and about some of the other factors that we've taken into consideration to reach the point where we are. So, some of it we can talk about in closed session, those factors that may involve personnel, we can't talk about all of that at this point. Next week, at our meeting on March 19th, that will be the, the vote on the tentative budget, it needs to be balanced at that point, and then I believe it's April 24th is the vote on the final budget. So, Tom, I know you have some sort of talking points, we got our state aid numbers on last Thursday evening, and we've been, you've been working especially hard the last, last few days, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. So, last time we had an update with the board, which is a little less than a month ago, we had about a million dollar gap, which is where we were.
These are talking points, but we can make them available to you.
And we were hopeful at that point that when the state aid was distributed, that we would see a better picture, we'd be able to close that gap, and be able to balance our budget. On March 7th, we received our state information, all the state aid was distributed to the school districts across the state, and I'm going to give you some of those highlights with our state aid. So our general fund, which is our operating budget, our state aid for next year is slated for $4,153,532, which represents an increase of $130,000 and change. Not as big as we had hoped, but it did help a little bit. Now, I think an important point to note about state aid, when you look at the state aid printouts that the state provides, they have all their formulas that cost out all the state aid that's going to our particular district. Included in those calculations is something called the uncapped formula aid, which basically is telling you if they had all the money in the world to distribute, this is what your district would receive. That number was $5,25,730. So that, that's the gap between what you're receiving and full funding, as it's called. Now, what the state does with that is, is they look at all the districts across the state, and what kinds of increases they're entitled to, and based upon the pool of money that they have available for increases, they prorate that money. So that's why, instead of a million dollar increase that we would have been hopeful for, we only received 130. Now, a new state aid that was provided is debt service aid for the district due to the recently passed referendum, and that state aid came in at $222,746. So this amount of money will help with reducing the local tax levy that will be required for next year to pay off debt for the new, for the new referendum.
But for those listening, there's the, the debt service, and there's the operating budget, so it does help with the tax levy and the debt service amount, but it doesn't help with our operating budget.
Tom, how, in, when we presented the referendum, we made some assumptions about debt service and state aid. Is this a different form of aid, or is this the aid that we had projected?
That's it.
This is it?
Yep.
So, we may not be actually doing better by the taxpayers than we had projected. Do we know?
The state aid is in the ballpark for what your financial advisor projected.
Okay, so, so we're on track to have the increases that we talked about in November and December? This doesn't reduce those projections?
We'll, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
But what you need to understand is, is that there were some things that we did in debt service that I'll talk about, that creates a little bit of an impact on the tax levy, but I'll get into that. Also included in our state aid was information related to charter schools. Now, what the Department of Education will do is they will direct the school district how much they have to appropriate in their budget for charter school students, and that is based upon what they have projected to be the enrollment for next year. Looking at trends, they have their formulas that they determine will be the number of students that will be attending the charter schools. That number was projected at 417 students. As a point of reference, we're currently paying this year for 415. That number of 417 translates to a $6,534,463 number that we must include in our budget. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what we'll ultimately pay over to the charter school. The actual number that will be paid will be based upon our actual count as of October 15th, 2019. So if that number comes down, then our payment will go down. And that's been our history. They projected 422, for the current year, we actually had 415. But we have no choice, we have to budget that number. That number, by the way, represents a $372,000 increase over what we're paying this year, so it is substantial.
A question related to that, if our number's 415 now, and we're projecting 417?
The Department of Ed projected it.
I'm sorry, okay, so they're projecting 417, we're paying on 415, why is there a delta of 372?
It, they have their formulas based upon trend, think about what your demographer does with projecting enrollments.
But our tuition, our, our payment to charter per student has not changed?
That goes up every year. That is also formula-driven, based upon what your costs are, yes.
So we're paying $372,000 more if 417 students attend charter?
Correct.
So not just the cost of two students, which would be about $30,000?
Correct.
Right, thank you.
Another item that popped up in our state aid, which we did not anticipate as we were building our budget, is a new line item that we have to include in our budget, which is for state facility tuition. As of October 15th of last year, we had two students that were placed in a state facility, and the district of residence is responsible for the tuition for that. It's actually a deduction from our state aid, that number is $115,886. So that was a new cost that we did not anticipate.
So, this is the first time we've ever had anything like this, so?
In, in recent history, I mean, we could go back 10 years, it's very possible that you could have had a child in a state facility at that point.
Okay.
But I'm looking at what our budget had last year, and there, there weren't any.
And so, do we, and I don't, is this for now, or closed? I don't know, are these seniors, like, is this something continues, or?
I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't know if this is something that's closed?
We have to budget for it for next year.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, the way it works is, if, if those students hadn't been to be placed in the state facility on October 16th, we wouldn't be talking about this. It's who's on roll as of October 15th.
Oh, okay, the 15th.
Yep.
Can I ask one more charter-related question? The price per student is, is our price per student different?
Tuition, yeah.
I'm sorry, tuition, yes, different from other districts?
Yes.
Has ours increased more than other districts?
Yes, it's district-based.
So it's not, it's not that a specific school, so if there's a sending child from another district to Princeton Charter School, that district may pay less than we are being asked to pay this year?
Yes.
And the state mandates all that?
It's based upon your resources and your spending habits, that's how it's assessed.
It's calculated by the state.
So are we getting more from Cranberry then? Has theirs gone up, and we're getting more revenue?
That's a different calculation. The, the tuition rate for Cranberry is based upon, it's a, it's a Department of Ed formula that they have in their budget software, that calculates your costs based upon your actual expenditures, and the number of pupils that you have, and how you have them classified. So, it will, for a high school tuition rate, it will take your actual number that you have listed as your average daily enrollment for high school students, and divide that cost into your high school costs. Now, you have some direct high school costs, and you have other costs that are prorated based upon the way your enrollment is set up. So for example, if 50% of your total enrollment was in the high school, then a particular line item that's a district account would have 50% of that cost into the high school bucket. So that's how the costs are prorated between high school, elementary, and then if you have special ed programs, self-contained special ed programs, those are direct costs, so any, like, if you ran an autistic program, those direct costs would be part of that program, plus there would be some prorated costs that would go into that as well.
The amount Cranberry's paying did go up, but there were, it was a different formula.
Yes, yes, it's different.
What is the charter tuition per student that we're paying?
They, they don't calculate it that way. The other thing too, that the Department of Ed does is, is that they, they weight the students, which is the way that they do state aid. So, a high school student will have, bad example, since they don't have high school students, but a, a middle school student would have a higher weight than an elementary school student. So, the actual weighted number of pupils that is determined is, is 430 students. They also take into account any students that have special needs, there's a class for that. So the bottom line is, even though they only count 417 bodies, when they put all the weights onto it, it comes out to 430.
And some of these numbers are just projected, obviously, because they don't even know, right, who their incoming class, or perhaps they do now, I don't know when the charter lottery happens, but as far as calculating number of students with special needs or other weighted amounts, I can't imagine they know, it's as of this October 5th.
Last October.
Last October. Oh, so it's based on the tuition, the, okay, that's right.
And then it gets, our payment gets adjusted.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, Tom, I understand that the charter calculation and the Cranberry tuition payment are different calculations, different state processes, but the charter payment is supposed to reflect, is it supposed to reflect our cost of educating them?
Partially, because what it does is, it takes into account your local contribution toward the schools, plus it takes into account the state aid that comes to the schools. And then there's a formula that takes 90% of that, and then that's, those are the factors that go into play. So the higher that your tax levy is up there, then there's going to be more money going to the charter schools, because in theory, those students should be entitled to the local tax contribution that's going toward the system.
But Cranberry, so our costs went up, and the amount that Cranberry will be paying us is also going up, and is it going up by a proportional amount?
I don't have those details handy, that was all worked out by Stephanie with the Cranberry BA, so that, that was a fixed number when I walked in here, so I didn't spend the time to look at how we got to that number. But from my understanding is, is that the historical problem that we've had, due to the formula, the way that it gets calculated, is that it was always underestimating the tuition rate. And what would happen to Cranberry is, is that when the rate was certified at the end of the year, it would always be a higher rate, which meant that they were getting hit with adjustments, and it was getting to be very costly on their end. So my understanding is, is that both BAs looked at that, and what they decided to do, rather than doing the calculation that was determined, they looked at what the last rate was, and figured that that was the starting point, and I think they went down a little bit from that number, I think the number that they had looked at was 18.6, something like that, and now it's 18.555, that much I know.
So 18.555 for the year we're budgeting for?
That's what Cranberry is paying next year, per student.
How many students is that, do you know?
Offhand, I don't.
At some point, it gets very confusing, because when you look at some state websites, the average cost will include everything, special education, all the free reduced lunch, ESL, and transportation.
Well, no, they, they pay directly for transportation, so that's not part of the calculation, but, you know, what happens is, it looks at all of your other line items in your budget to figure out what your cost per pupil is, and you divide your enrollment into that number, that's how it gets figured out. And you divide your enrollment into that number, that's how it gets figured out.
At some point, I think it'd be great just to have a little session on that.
Sure, we can do that, yeah, we can do that. So after we received all of our state aid, the bottom line was that this information actually did not help us. It ended up hurting us, because the gap that we had of 1 million actually grew to about 1.1 million. So in order to balance the expenses with our projected revenue, we had to make several reductions in order to balance our budget. Most of those reductions were in the area of personnel, which includes positions being eliminated through attrition. So it's possible where we saw areas where people were leaving the district, that we didn't fill those positions, or we're not going to budget for them. In addition to that, there were also some stipends that we looked at, at eliminating those stipends to save some money, and there were also some existing positions that had to be eliminated. And as Steve had mentioned, we could talk to the board, because those things impact personnel, and we can talk to you in closed session about those details. Other reductions that we were making to our budget in order to get it in balance was to flatline certain line items, like supply accounts. We made reductions in equipment accounts, and we also looked at our tuition that we're paying out to districts, to private schools for the handicapped, for special needs students, and in areas where we could trim that line item, we did. So the bottom line is, is that we do have a budget that's imbalanced. Our general fund budget, that's going to be recommended to you next week, will be at 91.7 million, and this is going to represent an increase of 1.016% increase in spending. That's it, that's it, 1.016.
On the general fund?
On the general fund. That's an increase of $1.4 million in spending. The total debt service fund for next year will be at just over 6.4 million. This will include a new debt payment that we have for the referendum, we're just making interest payments in next year's budget. So that is a pretty sizable increase because of the new debt. That particular fund is going up 11.4%, or 656,000. And that is attributed to the new debt that we have. Now, the other portion of our budget is the special revenue fund, which is for grants. These are entitlements that the district receives. What's going to be a little misleading with the grants is, is that you're actually going to see a reduction in that area, because the Department of Ed recommends to us that we can only budget 85% of our current year allocation. We do not find out those entitlements until after our budget is finalized. But once we do get those entitlements, we adjust our budget for those monies. So at this point, our bottom-line budget, that's going to be recommended next week, which includes the three funds, the general fund, the special revenue fund, and the debt service fund, will be at 100,425,988. Overall, that's an increase of 1.8%. And the reason why it's up higher is because of the debt service compared with the general fund number that I gave you. Now, on the tax side, everybody is obviously concerned about what's the impact for the local taxpayer. So our general fund, which is our operating budget, we have a local tax portion for that, that's the major fund where we're going to be raising taxes, that will be going up to 78,244,588, and that represents an increase of 1,997,954. Now, that is a 2.62% increase in the local tax levy. Steve had mentioned, we have a 2% cap on that number, and the reason why we're at 2.62 is because we are going to utilize that healthcare adjustment that is available to school districts when your healthcare costs exceed the state employee benefit program, and our program does. On the debt service side, we're looking at a local tax levy of 5,954,598. Now, this is where I was getting to, Brian, with what I was going to talk about. This represents an increase of $785,837. Now, that's a large increase in our debt service fund. Now, some of the long-term board members may know this, is that we've been offsetting our local tax debt service from a prior settlement agreement that we had. For the current year, we had appropriated 586,000 from that settlement fund. That fund has dried up, it's not there anymore. So, all that money now has to be paid by taxes, so that's why you have such a large increase. Now, we're still fine-tuning this number, we're working with the firm that's going to be working with our bond proceeds for investment purposes, and we're trying to fine-tune a better number that we can use for interest income. My sense is, is that we'll be able to knock that number down, maybe by as much as 200,000. It's not going to make that much of a difference, but it will help. But where we stand right now, with the numbers that I've presented to you, we're looking at a 3.3 cent increase in the school tax rate for 2019. That represents a 2.94% increase in the local school tax rate for 2019. For a house, the average house assessed at 838,562, that would represent a tax increase of $276. Now, as I mentioned, that fine-tuning that we're looking at, we're going to look to try to bring that number down a little, but even if we're able to get it down by 200,000, I think the difference is going to be about 12 or 13 dollars, that's all it's going to do for us. So that's the highlights for our budget. As Steve mentioned, we're going to have this as a recommendation for next week, as a tentative budget. You'll still have time to play with this until the final hearing in April, but I'll answer any other questions that you have about it.
For the healthcare, why did, what was the increase, just what caused it to go up 8%?
Yeah, so the biggest increase that we're looking at is, our insurance broker has estimated that our prescription drug program is going to go up 11%.
Prescription drug, and prescription drug is which one?
That's the ExpressGrips program that we have.
That's generics?
Yeah, includes that, yeah.
Brands, everything?
And the medical, the medical side is going up 3%.
Oh, okay, so you're saying prescription's going up 5, and medical's going up?
11. Overall, we're looking at an 8%. Now, the reason why it's 8%?
And the medical, you said 3.
And the reason why we're eligible, it's not, when you look at what we're paying today versus what we'll be paying next year, it's not really an 8% increase, but it's an 8% increase when you look at what our budget was. We underestimated our health insurance for this year. So it's an underestimated number that we're comparing it to. And that's one of the reasons why we're eligible for the healthcare adjustment, because when you do the calculation for that, it compares your next year's budget to the original budget that you had for the current year. So there's a wider gap.
It would be great to get those talking points when you have a chance.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to say, Tom, I know on behalf of the board, I think we really appreciate that you jumped into this in the middle of the budget. I don't know how you do that, I mean, it's pretty complicated stuff.
That's 30-plus years' experience of doing this.
So, really grateful that you were able to kind of jump in and just keep going. But I would request, I think in the past, that Stephanie did have a form of worksheet that she gave us?
Yes, we'll have that next week.
That would be most helpful.
We can get it earlier?
Yeah, the sooner we can have it, it just takes time.
You have to understand, we just wrapped this budget up this morning.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's a lot of work that goes into putting those documents together, but we'll definitely have it for you before the tentative approval.
By next week, that would be very helpful, because it's just hard to process all of this in abstract.
So, as part of our referendum, we're enthusiastically building seven new classrooms, and at some point, we'll need seven new teachers. Are there any new teachers budgeted in this budget?
No new personnel.
I noticed from Governor Murphy's budget that he's increased state aid to education, public education, and it's now 40%, 39% to be precise, of the overall state budget of 38 billion. And so, we're receiving a massive amount of state aid from the state, and of course, everybody wants more. So my question is, given healthcare trends, cost trends, and our contractual obligations, what's the plan to hire the seven new teachers for our new classrooms?
For what year are we talking about?
Well, whenever they're ready.
2020.
2020, I mean, what's, I mean, looking out a year at?
The following year?
Yeah.
Well, here's my off-the-cuff response to that. I worked in a district that had the philosophy of reallocation of resources. So whenever you were adding things to your budget, you had to look at existing programs in order to pay for it. So that's going to be part of the review, I think. The problem that we have in the district now is that our reserves are not very strong. And there's a couple of reasons why that happens. When you only have a 2% cap on your local tax levy, and your state aid is not going to a level where it should be, and you don't have those other sources of revenue to support your program, what happens is, your revenue sources start to collapse while your expenses continue to grow. And what's been happening is, many districts relied on excess surplus that they were able to generate through their budget in order to use that as a funding source in a subsequent year. We don't have any. And this is the big problem that exists with this budget, and my fear is, is that it's only going to get worse unless something drastically changes. We utilized over $3 million from our reserves for the current year. We don't have $3 million to put toward this budget. We only have a little over 2. So that's a reduction in funding, right there, from your reserves. And when your expenses are going up, and your funding sources are going down, and your budgets are getting tighter because of the kinds of things that we're doing right now, you're unable to generate that surplus. So, what's the solution? You know, I know that one of the things that we're looking at is making changes to health insurance, to try to reduce our costs. That's an area that we seriously have to consider in order to free up money to pay for those kinds of things. You know, doing things more efficiently in our district. You know, we constantly have to look at those kinds of things to find ways that we can reduce our costs. Those are the challenges that we're going to face in order to balance future budgets. But our biggest problem is our reserve structure, that's what's creating part of our problem.
Jump in one second, Brian. Thank you, Tom. In response to your question, I would say there's multiple ways we have to look at that, exactly what Tom said, and we went through this exercise of reallocation and looking for efficiencies. Energy and sustainability, we had an audit done. There's $250,000 in making sure that we're turning off lights around the district. That's three teachers with a benefits package. There's the healthcare adjustments that we hope we can make, same healthcare at a reduced rate, hundreds of thousands of dollars of potential savings there, and we're already talking to our associations about that. So there are ways that we can find efficiencies and look at reallocation. We've done a lot of that already to balance this budget. The governor did increase the state aid for schools by well over $200 million. It was not, however, a massive amount for the Princeton Public Schools. So it's important for the public and the board to keep in mind, that the state aid that we receive is about 4.5% of our operating budget, 4.5%. So, one of the other goals that this board has that becomes even more critical is that advocacy goal at the legislative level. There is something wrong with the funding formula. Tom talked about how we are a million dollars underfunded according to the state's own formula. So if they were actually funding the school district according to our enrollment, and the rising enrollment, we wouldn't be having this conversation, we would have had an additional million dollars. So, that's the reason that I think I'm eager to join with the charter school and talk about how we change some of the school funding formulas for those districts that have rising enrollment and expanded charter schools.
And just if I could piggyback off of that, I used to work at the State Office of Management and Budget, so, thank you, Tom. And in about two weeks, about two weeks after the numbers come out from the governor's budget request, you actually get the actual language from the recommended budget. That actual language will allow you to also get more of the details around some of the things. So I know we're not the only district in New Jersey that got less than was thought, and so that gives us a chance in about two weeks to take a look exactly what some of the language changes were, and there may be things, and that's why I'm excited that one of the goals that this board has indicated we want to do for the rest of this year is to work with other districts, because these are things that need to be looked at at the state level. And that's, you know, that's meaningful. These are meaningful, potentially, changes at a time when we're so strained and so stretched right now.
I guess I have one comment and one question. I'll ask the question first of Tom. Tom, when you talk about surplus, it sounds like we're a commercial enterprise that at the end of the year, you know, has made some money. Can you just say a few words about what the surplus is? I think I know, but I'd love to hear you say it.
Okay, there's a restriction on what you can keep in, you know, we call it surplus, but the technical term is fund balance. And there are different types, think of it as a reserve on a balance sheet. Now, the state dictates that no district can keep more than 2% of their operating budget in their general fund, fund balance. So, you know, for a district of our size, you know, in round numbers, a $90 million budget in the general fund, you're looking at about 1.8 million is the most that you can keep in your general fund, fund balance. Now, as you go through your year, you may have some unexpendative balances, you may generate some unanticipated revenue that will help build up that fund balance during the course of the year, and in your audit report, your auditor will do a calculation that will determine what's your maximum amount of money that you can keep in your general fund, and then anything that you have above that is considered to be excess surplus that must be appropriated in a subsequent year budget. So, for example, the audit that was just completed, which was June 30, 2018, the auditor had done its calculation, and the amount of excess surplus that you had over your 2% level was 193,000. So that's your excess surplus. Keep in mind that we had $3 million that was appropriated in your current year from fund balance. So, you only had 193,000 of excess over the 2%. So what do we do when we look at what we're generating out of the current year? We anticipate that we're going to generate excess surplus out of the current year budget. And we don't wait a year, we put it into the next year. So, if we're appropriating, in round numbers, 2.2 million dollars in fund balance, and only 200 of that is excess, we're banking on generating $2 million out of this budget. Now, I know we're not doing that. So that means we're going to be digging into our 2%, and that is going to continue to happen unless something changes drastically.
So that's a perfect lead-in to the observation, which is, I think this, for us, for our community financially, this is in the realm of climate change, that some of this has been building up, and we're hitting the wall. We've seen class sizes increase, and structurally, it's my hypothesis, which I'd love to study more with you, that we have a trend of expenses increasing by a rate in excess of 3%. You know, maybe, let's just say, for round numbers, it's 3.5%. And that our revenue- And that our revenue can only increase by, with the cap, unless there's some additional state aid by an amount below 3%, round number 2.5%. So if you have a 1% gap on a $100 million budget, that means that every year you have a million-dollar problem to solve. And if I'm wrong by a quarter of a percent in each direction, it's a $500,000 a year problem, and with 70% of our expenses being, you know, the excellent teachers and aides and staff, we end up needing to look at the other 30%. And I don't know that we could get any team of consultants to come in here year after year and keep squeezing 500,000 or a million dollars out of the non-compensation part of the budget to allow us to pay our existing staff. And I'm not even talking about the teachers that we need, you know, to put in the new classrooms or classrooms yet to be built. So I think that we as a board and we as a community have to understand that this is urgent, and that the solutions are not likely to be little nips and tucks here and there. It really requires the state to think differently about how they fund districts with rising enrollments, how they fund districts, wealthy districts, what they think of as wealthy districts, with charter schools, where we're very different than most other districts that have charter schools that get much more state aid.
Correct.
And we have to, we obviously have to keep thinking about how to be efficient, but the conversations that started last year with nonprofits, I think we need to continue those in a thoughtful way. And Dan and others have been wondering whether this community could muster some increased levels of voluntary support for public education. So I think we're going to need to do all of those things, but it's, I don't sense the urgency, but it feels like we're at super slow motion. The nose of the car has just begun to hit the wall, and all of the compression and airbags is, you know, about to happen. So how can we have that conversation? What data can we prepare and share that helps us, one, make our community aware of the challenge that we face, and understand, two, that when new developments have been dropped in, that hasn't resulted in increases to our tax levy? It has broadened the tax base, so a 3% increase in the tax levy may be felt by the taxpayer as a 2.5 or even a 2% increase. But we, you know, there's not sufficient awareness. I had a couple of conversations with members of council who just assumed, this is in the last week, that is, we were getting these new developments onboard, we were getting our share of additional money, and I point out, no, we've got 10% more students than we had eight years ago, but we don't have anything remotely close to an equivalent amount of additional money to invest in their education.
We have 8% more students in the last three years. 8%.
All right, so I get off my soapbox, but I think this is close to dire, and we need to, you know, really come up with some strategies to educate everyone and to grapple with the challenge.
I agree.
I heard three themes there, Brian. One is, I think, I'm on, I think, again, I agree with you on education and communication, and I think some of the things we're trying to do is to have better relationships with our partners in the town, and I think the more we can speak to them and the more we kind of have frequent and detailed conversations with them about how this is all impacting, I think that's really important. So the education piece, I think Dan has brought up many times the idea of other sources of revenue. We, as a board, are responsible for finding the funds to fund the programs that we provide for the children, and so I think we need to really organize ourselves and look at that in a methodical way. And third, I think, you know, I remember when my daughter was in second grade and I heard Judy Wilson come, I think it was 2008, and she explained the budget. It was the first time I, as a parent, paid attention, and I thought, now, how does that work? I can't see how that, the numbers are capped and the expenses are here, and, you know, I think we're at the point where we're hitting the wall, and this has been coming for 15, you know, 10 years, and here we are. And I think that we, as a board, really need to help this community understand that we need to look at long-term planning, financial planning for our schools, and it's not something we're knitting it together year to year, and every year's getting a little bit worse. But I think we've got to take a longer view as a board and figure out a process where we can bring people together and do some of that planning. Michelle.
And I think I agree with you, Brian, and I agree with you, Beth. I think that one of the challenges we have is that there's a lot of different answers to this challenge. What I love is the idea that we're going to be more aggressive with being involved in advocacy, because you know what? Quietest is kept, we're not a sympathetic municipality. You know, this is not a district where people feel sorry for us. We are one that is privileged, we are one that is high-achieving, and so with so many districts in this state who don't have that, nobody's looking at us and feeling sorry for us. Nonetheless, that doesn't mean that we should not be aggressive about being engaged in advocacy and partnering with other districts around some of these issues, around state mandates and other issues that cause us to be in this kind of financial bind. But the other thing that we can't forget, and make no mistake about it, we have to change how we do business. We can't insist upon having classes with no more than 21 students in them. We can't, there are so many things that we do because we feel this sense of entitlement that we can't afford to do any longer. So there's a number of different ways that we go about this. One is advocacy, two is to tighten our own belts and be realistic about what we can afford and what this community is going to be willing to shoulder in terms of a tax levy. And, you know, I think that being creative and partnering with other municipalities is just going to be really important in terms of what it is we do. But every dollar we don't spend is a savings, and we need to look at, everything needs to be on the table. So that's kind of...
No, I agree 100%. And it's easier to take a three-year view and work backwards than try to take a one-year view and look and work forward. So I think in Greenwood, Brian, as well, we need to have that strategic discussion. I'm not optimistic on the state because in addition to that 15 billion, which is 39% of the total budget, the state is dedicating 100% of the state lottery to education through teacher pension plans, and then writing an additional check for that as well. So I think as a practical matter, the state is tapped out. The second thing I want to mention, which is, I think, going to be a movie that's going to come to New Jersey, and it was previewed in Illinois. And Illinois is the only state in the country with a worst credit rating than New Jersey. So Illinois, and just above that is New Jersey, and above that, a bunch of other states. And the rating agencies normally say to the states and the towns and so forth, you need to make the tough decision to raise taxes, because they want to protect bondholders. And maybe a first in the history of a rating agency, they said to Illinois, don't try to solve your problems by raising taxes, because they were so concerned about the erosion in the tax base, particularly in an era when there's nondeductibility beyond that $10,000 in state and local taxes. So they're more concerned that Illinois raising taxes would cause people to leave than they were about protecting bondholders that way. And this has never happened before, and I think we may hear that in the state of New Jersey soon.
To build on what's been said so far, and I think you alluded to this in terms of our planning with partners and with the municipality as a whole, and looking for, just as we went through an exercise this budget season in really looking for efficiencies and ways of doing things better and cheaper, and I think we manage to do that in many respects, there's opportunity there for us to be doing that with the town overall. I know we're having meetings to talk about shared services, you know, are there, are there ways that if we look at the town and all its children, that there are things that we can do that will be more cost-effective and better and cheaper? And I think there are some really smart people out there who can help come up with some of those answers.
And by doing so, we're actually following in the footsteps the state senate president has called on school districts to work with municipalities, to look at joint services studies. We're already doing that, so we have an opportunity here to model for other districts as well.
Yeah, and we met last week with the master plan committee of the planning board, and we started talking about site selection and thinking about, you know, how we think about our schools, not just for the next three to five years, but the next 30 to 50 years, because we live in a town where the built environment is increasingly, you know, constrained, and we are growing, and we see no sign of that stopping. And so as a community, we need to think about, well, what does it look like, not just three years, five years, but 10 years, 20 years, 30 years? So I think we're starting those conversations, and I hope that they're productive, and I hope that that leads to us being able to collaborate also on our more immediate financial needs. And I just think we need, we have a lot of smart people, as you said, in this town, but we need to kind of think about it together, because we got a big challenge in front of us.
It's getting warmer in here. I don't know if it's the climate change analogy or...
I think we're the frog in the pot. Feel like the frog in the pot. So do we have any more discussion we want to have on the budget, or...
So I'll just, I guess, make one final comment, because I've been trying to find that school district. That looks just like us, and of course, we are unique, and there's no one who looks perfectly at us, but what have other schools done? You know, how have other school districts grappled with these problems? And I hope to challenge you all to say, no, Dan, your school district isn't the best. I got a better one. But for the time being, I came up with Summit, New Jersey, and their enrollment, in terms of numbers, is just like ours, almost the exact same number. I went through the New Jersey Performers Report. They have the same number of economically disadvantaged kids, similar amount of English-language learners, less special needs children, about 96 less. But they've done some really interesting things. One is their foundation is really, in fact, it was named the best foundation in New Jersey.
Yeah, educational foundation?
Yeah, educational foundation. And they have an endowment fund, and they take distribution from the endowment fund. And they have an annual fund. In the annual fund, they have distributions. And they have really bonded with their community, and this is, you know, a very, very successful way for them to provide funding. Number two is, they're not afraid to charge for some things, and they have charged for full-day kindergarten. And now, I saw on their website that they want to not charge for that, but, you know, they've been pretty tight with the wall, and they have charged for some things, and that's one of the things they have charged for. The third thing that they did, which I thought was fascinating, was this whole virtual education, the virtual high school. They came up with a program for elective for high school students. And so they're doing some really, really interesting things. So I've written a two-page front-back summary...
Thank you.
...for your reading pleasure.
Thank you, Dan.
And I shall send it out to you, and we can have, hopefully, a baseline from which to compare us. You know, when we look at a budget, we look at it and say, versus last year, but we're really not looking at it as a benchmark. So we need some schools to benchmark, maybe one, maybe five. But it's really interesting to know how other school districts are facing, are meeting the challenges that we face.
Can I just say something, though? Because Summit is the town next to the town where I was born, so I know Summit pretty well. And you're right, we need to take good ideas, best practices from any source possible. And whether we do this in, you know, finance committee, or as a board, or in other committees, it's a great way of taking a look at it. The one, there's a number of differences, though, between Summit and us. And again, you're right, every district's a little bit different, but I happen to know Summit, so it's not just in terms of the number of special needs children, but also Summit doesn't have a charter school. And so next year, we're projecting $6.4 million that we're paying to a charter school that Summit doesn't have. We have to factor that in. That's a big, for, on our budget, that's over 7% right there. And so when we look at comparisons, we have to really identify the comparisons that really match, otherwise we're doing apples to oranges. And we can take good ideas from anywhere, but we have to have that apples-to-oranges comparison.
Apples to apples.
Jess?
I do, I appreciate that you're encouraging us to look at other models, and I think we should, I think that helps us to continue to learn and to look for ways to be creative. I do think that Summit, one important thing, I haven't spent a lot of time on their programs, but I know that, just looking at their goals, that the one goal that is not there that I know we have committed to really strongly in this district is equity. So I think, I think we don't want to lose sight of that, and I think we want to hold on to that while we're looking at ways to be smart and creative. And so that is one really important sort of glaring absence when I look at what Summit's doing. So I just think while we're, while we continue to assess other districts and what we can learn from them, I think we want to hold on to our strategic there.
And I would say, just to build on what's been said so far, and I absolutely, you and I have talked about the benchmarking, I think there's always ways that we can learn from other places, and I'm willing to look around the world at what other schools are doing. I would say our commitment to equity is something that is a model for other districts, and we have hundreds of thousands of dollars of funding coming from partnerships to help with that. The charter school is unique, and the districts that, especially when we have an expansion and we're looking at a 32% increase in our charter school expenditures over the last three years, that's significant and really hard to keep pace with at a 2% cap. Some of the other ideas you mentioned that Summit is implementing, you can charge for full-day kindergarten if you do not already have it. If you already have it, you can't go back and say, okay, we're now going to charge for this service. But one of the things we have looked at is, could we expand our preschool program? And keeping in line with equity, we have, you know, provide it for students whose families may not be able to afford that resource, but we know it closes the achievement gap. And then, but fund it through those who can afford. So there's that piece that I would love to see us do. The idea of virtual courses, great idea, but read the fine print on what they did. There were no courses that were already taught by teachers. So they weren't using virtual courses to replace teachers, they were using virtual courses to add to their elective offerings. And it was only 25 students, I think, who were able to sign up for that. There was a little bit of a cap on that. So I'm not sure it was, it was a money savings approach for them, but I think it did, it probably broadened their offerings to their students and gave their kids a great experience. So it's worth looking at that.
So, no, Jess, I agree with you 100%. You know, these are ideas that we can then look at, see how they fit in our district. I agree 100% that equity is a huge priority. But as we go forward, we have to think about, not only what do we want to prioritize, but how do we want to fund it?
Right? No, you're right. I mean, you know, Montgomery and West Windsor have half-day kindergarten. We have full day, which is a big expense. I mean, you can go backwards, right? You could do that. But we're not willing to make really tough decisions. No, but that's, but I'm, but if you're talking about money, you know, you're talking about your taxes and this and that, and then they offer, the towns offer, like, for the other half of the day, but you got to pay for it and things. But again, you know, then that's not with equity, but then maybe you get nonprofits to help pay for that. But I don't ever feel we're willing to really chop stuff, you know? We're, oh, we talk a lot about it, but we never want to chop it. Like, again, we shouldn't have classes that have less in the high school than 25, because we can't, and then, you know, I know we do have with the teachers, but we have to decide where we are. We're not a moneymaker. We just don't have funds that just keep coming and coming.
We just don't have funds that just keep coming and coming. And we have to be a lot more creative in terms of what we have and reusing what we have. But it's true, I mean, people always just assume, you get everything at Princeton, you get everything. And we can't keep doing that.
Can I issue one other challenge? I wasn't actually going to issue this publicly, but now I am. To us and to our charter school friends, I think this is a real moment for change. We're at a watershed moment where obviously the budget is not working. It's not working for either of us. But they're all our students. And is there a better structure that we can together collaboratively implement that would allow us to better meet the needs of all of our students, all of our staff, differentiate instruction on every, for every single child? And perhaps we can come together in some way to change the structure that we currently have going forward. I'll just throw that out there.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Dan, I'm grateful for the work you did to get that. And I think that we need to be looking at whatever we can to be more efficient and also the things that we can do, especially on the revenue side. Because in order to retain a lot of our values, we probably have to do both things. We probably have to make some hard decisions and make sure that we preserve the values that are most important to us. But to the extent that we can be successful on the revenue side, through advocacy, through fundraising, through any number of strategies, it will only help. So I hope we can, it's easy to, whatever examples put forward, there's always going to be issues of context. But I think we have to look wherever we can look to get good ideas. And we have to understand that there are not, that nobody's passing out magic wands. We're going to have to do some of what Debbie said, which is we're going to have to make some hard decisions.
Yeah. I think we have to look at everything in the lens of our mission and goals. We go back and say, what are we doing for our children? How are we touching them? How are we giving them equitable chance at a great education? And how do all of our programs, and if they've been around for 40 years, they've been around for five years, we should have a methodical way of reviewing everything that we do for our children and look at everything equally. We're not chasing anyone down or threatening any particular area, but we have to just go back and say, what are we doing? How do we keep it going? What's sustainable?
I just, I want to, I don't know if we're coming to a close on this, we can move into closed session, but I really do want to publicly thank Tom, my administrative team, PAA, PREA, PRESA, all of whom came forward to recognize the need that we are facing and to offer creative solutions, some of which had to do with reductions in staff in order to preserve the mission that we have for our children. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you all for your thoughtful points. And I hope, you know, we're, this is the beginning of a conversation that we need to keep moving forward. I think now we're on to our public comment session. And if there are, is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? We ask that you stand and give your name and residence. And also, we would ask you, keep your comments to three minutes max. Thank you.
Sign up outside. It said you were supposed to sign up, so. Martha Friend, science lab teacher at Littlebrook. I live in Lawrence Township. Just a couple of things. I love aggressive with our advocacy. And teachers are right there with you. Advocacy for our students. And so no matter what that looks like. And so I heard, Steve, you said, you know, when we have to think about closing our budget, we now have to think about people. And I hope it's not just staff that interact daily with students who are thinking about administrators. Because I would wonder in Summit, if you're saying that's kind of comparable, except for charter, how many administrators they have there. I just hope it's not only folks who interact with students daily that we're thinking about. The other thing, we were talking about programs, so we have to prioritize programs. And then I heard, I think, Betsy, you were saying, we need, no, I'm sorry, Beth was saying, we need to know, kind of do these budgets, are they affecting the change that we want? So I would throw out the question to you with our DLI program, how much money, what's the price tag attached to that? And what is the data that we're using? As we have said, this is something Princeton's doing, it looks like it's growing and growing. There are significant, I would imagine, price tags attached, financial resources allocated for a very select number of students. The mission used to be, I think of the DLI program, is that we were going to close the achievement gap using this. How many native Spanish speakers are in the program would be data that would be important to know. So, yeah, let's look at everything. Absolutely, teacher's right with you, but then let's have everything on the table. And I would also really encourage you to ask teachers to partner with you in some money saving. There are many people who could have told you that the lights being on in our buildings for decades has been an issue. So now that we know that lights turning off could save three, like, seriously? Let's get to it. That should have been number one at every staff meeting, for every teacher, to educate all the students, all the staff. I mean, those things seem like we can be taking care of those. But the notion of like just asking staff, not through a survey, not through an email because they're dealing with a million parents expecting hourly updates on their kids, but like saying this is so important that at the next staff meeting, we're going to take an hour and we want to know from our teachers. Because they're the ones that are on the ground. So anyway, thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Clerman, Harris Road. I just want to thank you for the openness of this discussion. It's illuminating and very helpful. You've touched on a lot of very common sense questions. I think Debbie and Daniel are two questioners that I've really appreciated hearing from, Betsy as well. The last brief comment was very good. What's been passing through my mind for the last several months is the difference between saving money and restructuring expectations. As long as this, as Princeton wants to be, have 39 advanced placement courses and advanced study courses, what is the balance for the achievement of the average student? What's the budget that goes to that group of people? I think that's really important. Your job, as, in fact, Bob Ginsberg says, is to educate the public, public children, the children of the public, not just the elite. And so it's, you know, I don't think that's the whole question, but I think it's a very important question. I think it's central to Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? If not, I think it's time to make a motion to adjourn to closed session. Could I have a motion?
Some move.
Brian, Brian and Dan? Thank you. Okay, I think we're adjourned to closed session. I think, do we go?
Can we stay here?
Can we stay?
Yeah. We talked about energy costs. I know.